I do that.
Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the hard to believe August 1st, 2017 Pulse Falls City Council Meeting. Hard to believe we are that far into the year. And Shannon will note that all council members are present. We do have a couple announcements tonight. The fourth national, fourth annual National Night Out Community Event is going on tonight until 8:00 AM at McIntyre Family Park in Hayden Park in Hayden. Free food and drink provided by Texas Roadhouse, Target, and Pepsi. The National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police and community partnerships to make our neighbor neighborhoods safer and more caring places to live and bring, to live and brings police and neighbors together under positive circumstances. Join the Pulse Falls Community Volunteers for their annual community picnic this Thursday, August 3rd. Enjoy barbecue beer and wine and great music by the Kelly Hughes Band. This is a free, family-friendly event. Come early, bring blankets and lawn chairs or grab a picnic table under the Lions Grand Pavilion. Food and drinks will be available for purchase starting at 5:00 PM and music starts at 6:00 PM. And I'm looking, but it, I don't think it says it's at Comallum Park if it's not in the announcement. Congratulations, Cootney County Fire and Rescue on the opening of their Station Two on the west side of Pulse Falls. There will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony on Saturday, August 5th from 10 until two, I'm sorry, 10 until 12. And remember that we get to now enter 10-digit dialing for local calls, starting Saturday, August 5th in Idaho with the addition of a new area code. The state's current 208 area code will be joined by new area code 986. And that means callers will have to dial the area code along with the seven-digit telephone number to make local calls. Remember to go adjust all your stored contacts if they don't have it in there. Or maybe not, if you don't want to talk to people. Moana, the final movie night event of the summer is playing at Seringa Park on Friday, August 11th. The movie starts at dusk. Bring the family early and enjoy a bounce house for the kids, free pizza and free popcorn during the movie. I know the family movie nights have been great successes and I hear them in my neighborhood and sometimes we'll walk over, but you can sure hear the kids enjoying them, so it's a great event and thanks for those who put that on. I'd like to welcome our scout tonight, he's here for a merit badge and so welcome, and I told him hopefully there'll be something exciting that happens tonight. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
We have none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the July 18th, 2017 city council meeting. Item B is minutes from the July 17th, 2017 city council workshop. Item C is payables, July 11th through July 24th, 2017. Item D is an auditing contract with Anderson Brothers CPAs. Item E is annexation agreement for the Chase and Grange Annexation File Number A-17-01. Item F is master development agreement for Northern Plains Second Edition Subdivision File Number S-17-02. Item G is amendment number one with Copper Basin Construction for Trail Paving at Tulamore Park. Item H is Kimberly Field Subdivision Plot Application. Item I is construction improvement agreement for Bluegrass Point. And item J is construction improvement agreement for Crown Point Fifth Edition.
I have one question. Jason, I mentioned Jason, I was gonna ask this, but I want, I wanted information out on item D, the accounting, the auditing contract with the Anderson Brothers.
Right.
Memo, it says that last year's contract with Magnuson McHugh was $24,000, the next, this year's with Anderson is $27,000. And I asked what the bid for, from Magnuson McHugh was because it wasn't included.
And Magnuson didn't submit. The last few years since I've been here, the audit's been pushed later and later each year. Generally, in order to submit to JF away for the CAFRA award, we need to submit by March 31st. The last year I had received a deadline, an extension till April. This year I had to receive two extensions to April until May because they weren't completed with the, the audit wasn't completed yet. They had some staffing turnover, staffing changes, a couple people left that worked on our audit. And we didn't, I didn't feel that the level of service was there, so I met with another entity that does government audits, it's here, a local firm. We met with them, they were excited to work with Pulse Falls and submitted a bid.
Yeah, they're a good firm, but I just wanted to, when we saw that the cost was up and there was no bids, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood why.
Right.
Thanks, Jason.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
No.
I have a question on item G, the trail paving at Tulamore. Hey, I'm just curious, was this, was this a bid that they gave us for the original $150,000? And if so, why did we miss the mark by that much?
It was not part of the natural bid, so the bid was for them to put in all the gravel or do as much paving as they could along with the utilities to the restroom and the parking lot up to that $150,000.
So it's our decision to go ahead and add in this extra, did we know ahead of time that this is probably gonna happen?
Oh, yeah. And it was in our original cost estimates for the park.
Okay.
Matter of fact, it's coming in lower than we had put as our cost estimate.
Okay. I was just kinda, it's like started off at 150 and all of a sudden jumped to 200, it was like, that's quite a bit.
If we didn't use this, we'd hire somebody else.
Okay, great, thanks. Figured there was a good explanation, that's it.
Any other questions? Entertainer motion?
I move for approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Motion second, further discussion. Seeing none, Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up, tonight, we do have one public hearing and if I'm not mistaken, this is the first of two?
First of two.
First of two public hearings and it's on the fiscal year 2018 fee increases. And I should mention, if anybody wishes to speak on this, there are forms in the back, please fill them out and turn them in to Shannon and we'll give you an opportunity to address this. I'll open the public hearing.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It seems like we've talked about the fees already, a few times already at budget workshops, so this is just gonna be a repeat, but it's important nonetheless. I wanted to bring to the attention of the high points that we're gonna be increasing the fees for for fiscal year 18. In your council packet, we had done a, during the budget workshops, we had done, I had done a comparison between what the current fees are and what the proposed fees are going to be. And so in your council packet, it was just a, what the proposed fees are gonna be for fiscal year 18. In your packet, it'll show a 3% increase for water rates, a 7% increase for wastewater. The wastewater rates are, the increases are still occurring, they're just occurring, occurring at a lesser rate than what they have been years in the past. Reclaimed water cap fees, they're, the FCS group that prepared the cost study for us turned over the spreadsheets so that we could update them annually. And so when we had the old cap fee versus the new cap fee, that was actually a 19% increase for reclaimed water cap fee. The water cap fee is a 3% increase. Impact fees are going to increase 3.9% based on the engineering records from April to April. Sanitation fees, we talked about, there's a large reserve for sanitation that the city collects on top, what we get is our portion of the garbage fees. And so to help bring that balance down, Pulse Falls sanitation will receive a 4% increase, but the Pulse Falls customer will be staying, paying the same for their garbage in fiscal year 18. And also there was some various recreation fees that were proposed for increase in 18.
Jason, question.
Yes.
So for the water rates and the wastewater rates, those are based on the, the long-term plans?
Right. The city, yeah, the city has a master plan that we take the consultant's recommendation for what the capital needs are from year to year, and they propose these rates and that's what I wanted to stick with as we go forward with fiscal year 18 budget.
And on the wastewater rates, I've gotta beat Mr. Malloy to this one. That is because of the requirements that we've been, that have been placed upon us by EPA, et cetera.
Correct.
As far as updating the plan, improving the technology, et cetera.
Correct.
So I think we had two years, it was 14, 14, 10%, so it's, it's still going up, but it's going, it's trending down, unfortunately, the cost is still high.
Correct.
On the sanitation fees, again, you mentioned it, but I think the folks should know that there is an increase in that fee, but because of the funds available, that that fee will not be passed on in the monthly bill to our clients, our customers.
Right. And I was in discussion with Pulse Falls sanitation, their, their contract with the city is based on certain indexes and they will receive a, they're raised based on those indexes, but we, but the Post Falls customer won't receive a raise, won't concede increase in their bill.
And the impact fees that, that I understand is engineering report, but where are we, are we in the process of having impact fee study done or updated?
I know they're working, is that?
I think we're ways out, aren't we?
We're waiting for the master transportation plan to be complete and at that point then we'll start with the impact fee. So we're hoping for fiscal year 18 to do that master, I'm sorry, the impact fee study.
Good. Thanks.
All right.
As long as we're there, the, just for the sake of the, of the public and the record, the old cap fees versus the new cap fees, can you just briefly explain where those came from?
We had a, let's back up, the city had calculated the, the cap fee on, at recommendations of our consultants that we had hired, but there was a local jurisdiction that was taking the task on their reclaim, on how they were calculating that fee. And so Pulse Falls used the same consultant that helped the other entity create their new cap fee. We revised our cap fee and then once, part of the agreement was, once they were able to provide us with the new cap fee, they, they turned over the spreadsheet so we can maintain them ourselves, update them from year to year to find out what the new rate's going to be.
That was based on order from Idaho State Supreme Court, correct?
Idaho Supreme Court, yeah.
That, that structure was approved, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So again, like the, like the wastewater rates, that's one of those things where a higher government entity is tied in our hands and we really don't have anything we can do about it.
Correct. Yeah. And with the percentages, it's always interesting to see, you know, you have a 3% water increase, but then I like to go through this comparison and see from year to year what this looked like for a Pulse Falls citizen. So in fiscal year 17, if you go through the sanitation, the water connection, the water usage and the wastewater, you're looking at $73.36 for fiscal year 17. So with the proposed rate increases for fiscal year 18, for the same service, for the same water usage, it's looking at a, your monthly bill will be $77.13, which for the homeowner is a $3.77 increase from 17 to 18.
This is based on what value of a home?
It's, it's no home value, just, just your connection fees and then a 5,000 gallon usage per month.
I'm with you now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jason, is that normal, 5,000 gallons per month, is it?
Sometimes that's a little high. I know some, some residents, depends on how many people are in the house. Some I've seen where it's anywhere between 1,000 and 2,000 to 3, but 5 is on the higher end. Of course, during the summertime, the water usage is higher, but in the wintertime, we try to keep.
So that's just the average?
It's just an average, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. This is the first of the two public hearings and the next step will be on August 15th, there'll be another public hearing. And then if, if the resolution is adopted, then the fees will go into effect October 1st.
Any questions, Jason? Thank you very much. Anybody wishing to speak? Wishing to speak in neutral, Bob Flowers.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Every year, we just keep going up and up and the fees just keep going up and up. The city at this point seems to have plenty of money. I see where they're buying hundreds of acres of land, they're redoing cars, they're doing all this for this, for the city personnel. Why can't we back off on, say, the water fee increase of 3%? That's just 3%, but why not give something back to the taxpayers? Or even, you know, the, the 7% on the wastewater? I know that the federal government says you gotta meet this standard or that standard, but we seem to have plenty of money at this point to maybe do something nice for the people of this town instead of just doing like everybody else and keep raising them every year because that seems to be the standard, standard operating procedure. Wouldn't it be nice, just one time, to give a little something back instead of taking more? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Wishing to speak in opposition, Kevin Daly.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having me. I actually didn't come here to speak about that until I saw it was on the agenda, so just like this gentleman here, obviously the fees. Being retired from government service 30 years, I have seen how the taxes go and how you, how it works and you guys are all my neighbors. I mean, we all live here and I know that you are pretty fiscally minded, I've seen that when you guys run for office and we vote for you and everything else, so, but I'm just with him, I'm in opposition, obviously being on fixed income, retired, a couple out here with us, you know, when the fees go up, it's, it's, obviously it's, it hurts. But like I said, I appreciate, I know how you guys vote, I see and I, and I've watched it, so just as a, as a taxpayer, you know, just keep watching the dollars like you guys do, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Jason, any need to rebut? And I, with that, I will close the public hearing. And I would just comment that, you know, I appreciate the comment you make and I think one of the things we did do is on the sanitation fee, we looked and there is a fee that's being passed on to the city and the city's not passing that on to the taxpayer. And we will continue to look at opportunities such as that in order to try to keep these fees from increasing. So I, I appreciate Mr. Daly's coming and we do try to be fiscally responsible and believe me, we're aware of it because it affects us the same as it affects everybody else, so, you know, we, we do pay attention. Council, deliberation comments?
I have a question. If we're going to have another hearing, are we going to make a motion tonight?
No.
No.
We're just going to let it lay, isn't that right?
Right.
Okay.
Unless you had something that you wanted us to change coming forward to the next hearing.
Any comments? You okay to end up with that?
Yes, I'm good.
I'm good. With that, we'll just wait for this to come back at the meeting.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, two weeks. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business and we have none, followed by citizens' issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. And I would comment, because I know I talked with a few folks that want, are here to listen to the information, I think Brian's gonna be presenting on parks and the fences, et cetera. This is not a public hearing and since it is on the agenda, it's not something we'll listen to comment on tonight, but we'll listen to the presentation and if you have further questions or concerns, you can, you can contact us. So I just wanted to throw that out before we start. And if anyone does wish to address the council, we'll give you an opportunity to do so. Seeing none, we'll move to new business and tonight we have none. We do have one ordinance and that is on the Chase and Grange, up to just left me, annexation, was it? Chase and Grange.
Annexation.
Thank you. Annexation. And that's one ordinance.
Move to place the ordinance, Chase and Grange Annexation File Number A-17-01 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Seeing none, Shannon, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhem?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance of the city of Pulse Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for annexation of property consisting of approximately 5.04 acres located at the south half of the east, 330 feet of the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 28, Township 51 North, Range 5 West Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, and zoning of said annexed property, a single-family residential R1, providing for the amendment to the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance, Chase and Grange Annexation File Number A-17-01 to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhem?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Motion passes. Next item up are administrative staff reports. The first is park encroachment update and it says Dave Ford, but it is gonna be Brian.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for taking the opportunity to, to listen about what we've got going on on park encroachments throughout the park system. Just wanted to take this opportunity to explain the areas that we have addressed already over the years, things that are active at the moment and a couple of these areas that have been up for conversation and that we've been interacting with the public as of late. So this map provides a little illustration of these areas that we are experiencing some encroachment or have experienced encroachment in the past. Generally, this presentation is gonna work from the west to the east as we move through the city. A number of these items have been solved a while ago, being, or Treaty Rock Park was back in 2011 that that was solved, so we'll talk about that here in a bit. Corbin Park on the west side of Corbin, along the Corbin ditch, we've been working for the last almost three years to solve this, this area of encroachment where there was a structure that was built out onto the, the old ditch right of way that, that is owned by the city. We've had a series of surveys that have been done at this site. Generally, as these encroachments become known to the city staff, we'll look at this GIS overlay that we see on the screen here and identify that an encroachment similar to what this is, it, it may be potential. And then we'll go out and visit the site and if necessary, initiate that survey. That was done in this case, there was some dispute as to the results of that survey, survey, the property owner presented conflicting information and then a third survey had to be initiated to try to solve that moving forward. So that's where we're at in that process now. We hope this one will be wrapped up by the end of the year and that a land exchange can be negotiated with that property owner so that the public can have access in and around that piece of property and retain the ability to, to have pedestrian traffic from Pleasant View in and through Corbin Park along this old historic irrigation flue. Two other encroachments along that same parcel that exist, one in the center of Corbin Park or just to the north of the baseball field at Corbin Park and one off to the, the east side of the park, we haven't yet addressed. They do appear to be encroachments, but we have not surveyed that location yet to determine whether or not those things are illustrated by that GIS overlay. And it really just comes down to the ability to manage the workflow of these, these encroachments along with budget necessary to, to contract these surveys and move through these processes. So we are aware that these have potential, we haven't moved forward with addressing them in any way, shape, or form at this point.
Brian?
Yes?
Can you give us an idea, when you say encroachment, are we talking a couple of feet, a couple of hundred feet?
It depends. Some encroachments are just of the nature of, they've piled their yard debris out into the park.
Okay.
Some are broken down vehicles, some are plantings that they've extended, some are fences. And in that first scenario I presented, that one has an actual hard structure, an actual building, permitted building structure that was built out into the park. So those are the most complicated issues that we have to try to, to work through and...
Again, with this structure that's out into the park, I mean, again, is it like a couple of feet or is it like 10 feet?
I think there's 20-some square feet.
30, it's about 30 feet.
Yeah.
30 feet.
Yeah, it's a full garage and driveway.
And Brian, did you say it was a permitted building?
That, so that's in the county. So it was a county.
Oh, oh, okay.
A county, built, a county parcel.
Okay.
Permitted structure.
Okay.
On a city parcel.
Okay.
Yeah.
Centennial Trail West, this conversation is only recently developed and this one was initiated as a part of, the neighboring property owner is a property manager that manages this trailer court.
And they called us relating a tree failure that, where a tree failed and landed on their parcel. Didn't do any property damage, but they wanted us to clean up our tree. When we went out on site, we recognized that, yeah, that tree's on your property, we'll clean it up, but there's a number of things that have been built out into the park that we need to address as well. We've made that property manager aware that that's what we've identified, they seem willing to work with us to try to resolve those issues, but we really haven't gotten this process rolling. This was only three weeks ago that this became a reality for us and, and we've made contact with that property manager, so we'll move forward from there and, and try to resolve that in a way that suits both of our citizens and, and can maintain that property along the Centennial Trail just west of Falls Park. Treaty Rock Park, as I mentioned before, this was solved through a lot line adjustment. As you can see, it took two and a half, three years to, to move through this process from start to finish. And this was actually a scenario where the city was encroaching on our neighbor. And it's, at the time Treaty Rock Park was constructed, the parking lot here was built across the parcel onto the parcel that contains these apartments here. The apartment owner wanted to build a storage unit building for their uses and we were able to come up with this, this swap for this corner of the park and be able to retain our parking lot in the function of the public facilities as a part of Treaty Rock and be able to solve that in a mutually beneficial way. So it's not always just our private property owners that have extended, extended beyond their reach. Black Bay Park, we have two sides of the park right now that have encroachments oriented a little odd in this, in this picture, but this is the west side or the downstream side of, of Black Bay Park. And this scenario was provided to us through staff taking a walk through the park on their lunch break and noticed that it looked like the neighbor had just expanded their landscaping and it was likely that it had expanded out into the park. Upon further investigation, it looked like that was the case and at that point, we initiated a survey. Prior to that survey, we walked the entire park boundary and noticed that it was also likely that this eastern boundary had some encroachments. Public also provided some feedback in, in and around that same time that they had identified some encroachments on this eastern boundary. So that precipitated us providing a survey of our entire boundary along the east and the entire west side of the park. Since that time, we've worked with this property owner who also owns a parcel adjacent to Black Bay Park, approximately five acres, and you've seen that, that presentation in a previous council meeting where we're working towards a land exchange for a portion of this river frontage, some cash and, and this parcel. That'll provide access to the neighborhood off to the west side of Black Bay so that they can enjoy the pedestrian facilities or the, the trails within Black Bay Park. It'll also help us with some, some maintenance and operations of the park and addressing some beetle-killed pines that we have in there as well. It'll provide a little better access route with the utility vehicles and such to gain access into that park. That, that hopefully will be wrapped up here in the next month or two, hopefully at least within the inside of the calendar year, we can have this one through. The eastern boundary, I'll have a series of slides that generally will work from the south end to the north end and illustrate what types of encroachments we're dealing with on that, on that park boundary.
Brian, can I ask a question?
Yes.
If we don't, if we recognize that someone is encroached on city property and we don't do anything about it, is there some sort of like statute of limitations or something where we have to take action or we could lose that piece of land?
Not with public land, is my understanding, and Warren would be able to weigh in on this better. With public land, it's public land. If it were your own private property, then there- If it were your own private property, then there is a dynamic that if you wait so many years, you could lose the rights to that piece of property.
There are some other dynamics that come into play, potential creation of nuisance, that someone may be injured or, you know, creating an issue that you don't want to have something that's unsightly or dangerous that's left on the property. And so it's, some of this is driven by what the council wants us to do as we identify these. If it looks like we need to do something permanent, those are coming back to you as you, as Brian just spoke of, the exchange, and we brought that to you some six months ago. And I assume that as we work through some more of these, you'll probably see some requests from staff to take an action one way or the other.
Okay, great, thanks, Warren.
Going to talk through this workflow of how our staff address this, and we can talk about this at the end if you have any other questions on how our staff works through the workflow of managing and addressing these encroachments. This is an illustration of part of that land swap, that land exchange. This line here illustrates the property line. You can see the landscaping, how much that extended out into the park, relatively minor. There was some debris that was deposited in these areas. This is the area that will be part of that lotline adjustment that will go to this property owner. And as a part of that agreement, we agreed to relocate a trail just slightly to the east, still provides the access that we desired along this riverside trail system at Black Bay. And then we're adding some vegetation to help reduce the potential for park users wandering into that neighbor. And some of this is solving some drought stressed areas that just are limited in vegetation along that side of the riverbank. On the east side, this is working our way from the shoreline or the south going northward. This would be the pier or your home, the big retaining wall that you see as a part of their, holding up their guest quarters or the tennis court. So this sits well back, don't see any encroachment at that location. The next parcel down, the blue carcinate markers we installed shortly after the survey was enacted or installed, just so we have a visual reference for staff going through and doing our quarterly inspections of our property line to help forego any future expansion into the park by our neighboring property owners. This one here, we don't see any encroachment out into the park that's worthy of addressing. It's all native vegetation along that boundary. This is a view of that same parcel, it's a relatively long property line, so this is facing southward. As you can see, here's that carcinite post right here, so native vegetation to the right. Working our way just slightly north again, once again, native vegetation. This is the sort of boundary that we'd expect to see where the neighboring property owner stops short of that property line and then the native vegetation extends out into the park. Next one to the north, you can see our blue stake is located here and here, and park sits off to this side and this side respectively. So in this case, fencing improvements were installed out into the park as well as some landscaping, and we've met on site with this property owner and this plus the next two that have similar encroachments, and we've mutually agreed to address these by the end of May of next year. Some of that is to accommodate their desire to transplant some of these plants, and we're amenable to that. Next one to the north, mostly vegetation in this scenario, couple little landscape improvements. And the next one beyond that, mostly just need to adjust their irrigation sprinklers so they're not watering into the park, but there is a small little landscape bed that extends out into the park as well that they've agreed to address once again before that into May 2018. And then moving easterly into Kiwanis Park, these two pictures illustrate, I guess Kiwanis Park, to back up a little bit, Kiwanis Park is kind of unique in that it's a parcel that's owned by the Kiwanis Club, and city has a MOU and a maintenance agreement to manage that site for 50 years, and it stays open to the public as a part of that agreement. So that provides, that maintenance agreement and the MOU provides some very specific direction as to how the canopy and the forest stand is to be managed, and it specifically addresses how the property boundaries are to be managed as well. Our discovery of that, or my discovery of that, came about as a part of a request to go through and do forest fuels mitigation and do what they called fire smart throughout the park because they were worried about fire moving through the neighborhood. And as we read through that MOU, it specifically called out managing that stand for a 100-year rotation. So we always have regeneration of the forest stand in and throughout the canopy, which is in direct opposition of that fire smart type idea where you're trying to reduce ladder fuels and reduce fuel loading at the ground level so that you don't end up with a crown fire or a canopy fire. So we've worked through that and we're working through doing some thinning practices to stay consistent with the management objective of that understory so that we can manage those trees long-term on that 100-year rotation. And those are tasks that have to be immediate, you know, it's not like you have to mow your lawn weekly. You've got five to 10 years of time where you'd need to do these thinnings to be able to manage that understory so that you still get decent trunk taper and you can have a long-term viable stand as that stand begins to rotate through. These two pictures illustrate what that management goal is to the best, two really good examples of what the Kiwanis Club was trying to achieve with that management goal. A strong vegetated buffer adjacent to the property line to manage secluded environment so that when you're in the park space, you don't notice the built environment, or at least you have some level of visual buffer as you move towards the built environment. So as you see, when you're walking down this trail, you've got 30 feet or better of dense vegetated buffer along that property boundary. Specifically calls out that there was to be a fence installed around the whole property and that that fence would not have fences with gates, and that there would be an access at the end of, I believe it's Ithaca Street, and that's the paved access that sits to the south, south end of, or about midway down that eastern property line, that that would be maintained as a public access into the park for the neighboring properties and the neighborhood. So this is the management goal, and as we'll move through here, once again, generally moving from the south to the north, and I skipped around a little bit just because so many of these are rather redundant, and so the very southernmost end, most of these trails are well away from where I'm taking these pictures. This is the southernmost boundary. There are no gates here. The very next property up, there was a gate installed at a later date, so that's in direct opposition to that management agreement. And as we've discussed with the Kiwanis Club in moving through this process, it is their desire for us to stay true to that management agreement and eliminate any gates that have been installed on this existing section of fence as well as not install gates on the proposed section of fence. So, and that management goal is to reduce this graded trail network leading from the adjoining property owners to the park. Next two gates up, once again, gates installed along those properties. There's one gate that was called out within the management agreement as it relates to the existing section of fence, and it's right next to where the fire hydrant is, next to the park, so that there's emergency access to that hydrant should an emergency arise that they'd need to gain access to the park and fight a forest fire there. Moving north of that pedestrian access into Hunter's Glen, this is the first property to the north, and the distant survey marker sits right about here. This light pole is fully on the private property side, so that is not an encroachment, but all of these landscape improvements that you see here are encroachments into the park space. The next one to the north, this one we have, I don't know why the coloring is so rough on that, I apologize. Fencing improvements that have been installed, this property line sits roughly here, so we've got a fencing improvement and a water feature that have been built out into the park space. And then beyond the fence, there's practice of mowing or trimming grass out into the park and a couple of fruit trees that have been installed out there. Next one to the north from there, property corner sits here, so once again, a fencing improvement and some landscaping improvements extending into the park. Moving further north, we've got a fence that is on private property, but they've installed these little fixtures that will intrude on the ability for the city to install the fence that's proposed, so those encroachments would have to be removed to facilitate the installation of the fence. And then this next property, once again, mowing has become practice. They've changed the nature of the landscape by installing some fruit trees and spruce tree out in the site, and they've harvested any of the ponderosa pines in that area and changed the stand to predominantly Douglas fir, which is not the suitable dominant stand on the site. Douglas fir is there, but we don't expect that to really thrive in that environment long-term. So with that, stand for any questions, and we could walk through the process that we worked through if you so choose.
I think your process is pretty well laid out, you know, you investigate, you do your work, you get it surveyed, you make contact, you try to get it resolved in the appropriate manner. Let's talk about Kiwanis because I know we've had a lot of comments on that, and we received another letter today. We don't own the property. The agreement and Kiwanis's desire and the requirement for the MOU was that there's going to be a fence installed. So if we don't install the fence, we're in violation of that MOU.
Correct.
So I know folks have asked, and it's not that the city, I'll speak for myself, it's not that I'm real anxious to put a fence in up there, but that's what's required by the Kiwanis Clubs, the owner of the property, when they sign the memorandum of understanding with the city.
Right, correct.
Gates, so people say, why can't we have gates? Well, you addressed it. They don't want it for various reasons, and again, they're the property owner.
And that is one of those items that is specifically called out in the MOU.
And what's interesting to me is, and everybody has a different take, and I think we visited with it, but you remember with Black Bay, we had someone come in and say, if it's a park and you're changing this property and doing a land swap, we want you to put a fence in to keep people off their property. So it just really depends on the neighborhood, what it's like, and who the neighbors are, and it's going to be different in all regards. But I just want to make sure everyone understood. It's not that the city's saying, we want to put this fence in, we have to put this fence in, but again, the agreement that was signed for the city to have access, for citizens to have access to that park required.
Questions? Carrie?
How long ago was that MOU signed? I'm thinking probably about 20 years.
2001, I believe it is, 2000, 2001.
And Brian and Dave have approached Kiwanis, if you want to explain that, Brian?
Yeah, so we meet regularly, at least on an annual basis with their maintenance committee, and we did discuss with them shortly after the last council meeting when we had some comment from public about this fence, and they did want to maintain the intent of that MOU. They wanted to maintain the fence, and they wanted to ensure that we didn't have those gates and that we were to address those gates to the southern half. So they were pretty specific that they did want to stay in that.
Yeah, that was my question, if there had been an opportunity or at least the...
They did also say that they were acceptable to managing or reducing the height of the fence to accommodate some of the requests from those neighboring property owners, and they were okay if we didn't go with the galvanized chain link mesh, that they'd be acceptable to us changing that material. In looking at that, if we went with the six-foot tall vinyl coated material, it would exceed the anticipated budget for this project. So we're looking to move towards a four-foot fence. Hopefully, that will also reduce some of the site inclusions that are concerns of those neighboring property owners and be able to go with that vinyl coated product that the majority of the property owners were favorable to. Once again, we have 11 different property owners along that new section of fence, and I haven't surveyed who wants what, but we can afford to do a green vinyl coated product within or near to what our original project budget was on this, including the survey.
Dave, would you provide, you sent a, I emailed myself, I think Council Malloy, would you send that to the rest of council just so they can see what the specifics on that were, and it'll give you more information on that?
Thank you.
Brian, has the property owners had an opportunity to talk with the representatives from Kiwanis?
I don't know if they have or not, yeah.
Because we're just really the middleman in all this. We've got two, I mean, we've got 11 property owners on one side, one property owner on the other, and we're kind of in the middle.
That's true.
And Kiwanis has been made aware of the requests of the property owners.
Yeah, okay.
And so I have maybe a question. If the city doesn't adhere to the lease, does the lease become revocable?
Potentially.
I haven't reviewed the document, but my guess is that's exactly what would happen ultimately. If we're not complying with the terms of our agreement, they would have the right to revoke it.
And then I thought that lease was 50 years with a 50-year renew. Isn't that right, Dave?
It's, I believe it's a 25-year renewal.
Oh, okay.
Fifty, 25.
Okay.
Yes, 25.
I'd like it near the end of my career to be able to renew that lease and maintain that as a public space.
Yeah, that would be good, that it didn't get revoked and sent back to, because we all know if that happens, what's going to happen down there, so.
Pretty, pretty special 87 acres along the river that provides a lot of value to the public, and if we did lose that as a public open space, it would leave a big, big hole in our distribution system and access to park land.
Any questions? Brian?
That was a good presentation, good information, and Dave, if you'll send that out to council so you can just see the specifics on that, I'd appreciate it. Thanks, Brian. Next item up is FEMA assistance visit update.
So I'm going to hand this off to Lindsay King. She's the, for those of you who haven't met Lindsay, she's the newest member of our planning department. She has, I have told her this and joked about it, she's worth her weight in gold when it comes to handling FEMA issues. We had, I'll call it the good fortune of having FEMA do an audit and identify a number of things that they want us to remedy or change, and she is working through that process, and she's going to tell you all about it.
Thank you, welcome.
Thanks, Warren. Mayor Jacobson, members of the city council, my name's Lindsay King. I'm a planner with the city of Post Falls, and I'm here to talk to you about the FEMA visit that we were paid, May 17th of this year. It's a community assessment visit. They're done periodically, about every five to 10 years, depending on the side of the city and how much waterfront and floodplain that they have. So FEMA maps a special flood hazard area. It's a two-dimensional map, and it essentially is the waterway, a river, a lake, creek, stream, whatever you want to call it, and it goes out to the potential of a 1% chance of a catastrophic flood. So we have quite a few properties in that flood hazard area, and they require management through the city. So the community assessment visit is also to make sure that we are participating properly and we have compliance within the National Flood Insurance Program. The National Flood Insurance Program is a voluntary program. It was created in 1968 by the federal government to allow for affordable insurance for private property owners. Again, it is voluntary, and the city of Post Falls does participate in this program. According to the initial community assessment visit results, we have some deficiencies within our flood code and our flood permitting processes. So FEMA... So FEMA has given us some assignments essentially, some homework to do. By June 15th of this year, we were required to show that our ordinance and our permit, our flood permit, met the minimum standards required federally. By July 31st of this year, we were to show our administration processes. So what happens when a flood permit comes into our office? How do we check it off? What's the cost of it, timeline, et cetera? We were also asked to show our enforcement process. So by August 31st of this year, which will be the final component of the FEMA requirements, we were given a list of properties along the river that FEMA wants to know where their permits are. Unfortunately, not all of them have permits. Actually, a good portion of them don't have permits, from what I could find. So these properties, I sent out a letter on July 19th and essentially said, you are required by FEMA and the city of Post Falls to have a flood permit or a other documentation stating that you're outside of the floodplain. 14 of the 28 properties that I sent letters to responded almost immediately. They were all very helpful and willing to participate in this. Three of the properties currently have LOMAs or Letter of Map Amendments. Those essentially state we are vertically out of the flood hazard area and that is strictly done through FEMA. Three of the properties that we sent letters to had addressing issues, so we're trying to figure that out internally. Two of them have progress, are in-progress permitting. So they're either incomplete or are having some issues. The remaining had no responses. Now, if there's no response by the response-to-date in the first letter, they'll get a second letter. And if there's still no response, then Warren will then send him his own personal letter. So part of the reason we, this is so important to get these letters back and responses and permits is because if we don't keep our compliance with FEMA, we will be taken out of the National Flood Insurance Program, which means that we will no longer be eligible for federal disaster relief. That means any federal disaster, snow, wind, flooding, fire, anything. It will also mean that property owners along the river who are required to have flood insurance, either through their loans or however other sources, they will no longer be eligible for any federal aid with these through the National Flood Insurance Program, which means some of them will likely need to pay their bank note immediately. If we are taken out of the National Flood Insurance Program, we can be put back into it, but we have to go through a bunch of hoops and make sure that we are meeting all requirements by FEMA. So to continue our floodplain management within the city, we're doing staff training and testing. I will be certifying as a floodplain manager in September. We're doing some flood code updates. We're doing some application updates and better file management so that we can keep track of our permits, not only in a paper level, because some of the FEMA, some of the paperwork required by FEMA has to be original signatures. They can't be digital, so we have to have paper. Fortunately for me, we don't have very many properties along the river. We don't have 200, we just have a small handful. And then we'll be implementing the Tyler software, which will help track it. And it'll trigger building permits when flood permits together. Any questions?
What about a comment?
Of course.
So I was surprised when I found out, from a banker's standpoint, we always have to deal with flood insurance. But I was surprised from a city's standpoint that we had to. And these are requirements that you have to adhere to for disaster assistance. What's interesting, though, is the fact that you have the property surveyed and you get your letter stating that it is in fact outside of the flood zone does not mean it's going to stay outside of the flood zone, because fairly recently they updated the flood maps and a customer of mine who had approval that it was not in the flood zone is now back in the flood zone. The house is built, et cetera. So it's an extremely, extremely onerous, difficult group of rules to adhere to. And all I can say is I take my hat off to you for being willing to step up and try to make sure that we can adhere to it, because if I had here, I would pull it out. So again, I thank you for your efforts on that. It's not an easy challenge, not an easy task, it is a challenge, so I personally appreciate it.
Of course. I actually really enjoy the floodplain and floodwork.
I don't know you, but you must be.
It happens. And there are, so some of the paperwork, the certificates of, the elevation certificates and the Letter of Map Amendments or LOMAs, they can take the structure or the property out of the floodplain. So it's, if a property owner just did the structure and they decide to build something else, they're still going to have to go through the flood permitting process just because they didn't do the entire parcel, so.
And it's not just a residence, it's any structure.
Any development, any grading. If you place a doghouse in the floodplain, you have to have it properly anchored or flood-vented. It's anything. You want to put, you know, some landscaping in, you have to have a flood permit for it. You want to replace your deck or your dock that's above, you know, the city limits, you have to have a flood permit for it.
The government at its finest, so thank you very much.
We do what we can.
Any other questions, Lindsay?
That highlights part of why there are so many compliance issues, because many of the things that are encroachments, we don't require building permits for. So we may never know about that encroachment until somebody discovers it. And now we have an enforcement issue after the fact where we have to approach a property owner and say, you've done something that potentially didn't require a building permit, but you did need to get a flood development permit and now you need to make some alterations to that structure. So we're in the middle of working through that. We're hopeful that most of these we can deal with on the mapping level. But it's entirely possible that some folks are going to need to make some structural changes to their properties. Some of that can be fairly expensive. Bonner County just recently had to repurchase a home at the tune of $1 million. So it's, this is a big deal. And it's, we're really lucky to have Lindsay here, who's had some experience. She actually worked up in Bonner County, has worked in floodplain issues, who can help work us through this. I got the good fortune of spending a week, last week with FEMA in Caldwell, attending some training. So hopefully we can get our way through this.
Thank you very much.
This assessment's the same thing that made Coeur d'Alene take out all those trees on the deck, right?
Similar. They had Corps of Engineers as well in that, and that still isn't done. I heard last week that there's still some additional work, that they're wanting more trees removed, some additional studies done, so it can take some time.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is mayor comments. We were able to take a tour of Orgul's new facility today. Shelley, myself, and my wife joined us. Wow. We saw that thing when it was open, there wasn't anything inside that huge building. Have times changed. What they are doing is absolutely amazing. And I'll throw it out there, we asked them how they were doing employment-wise and they're looking for 25 people. They can't find them. So I guess it's good that employment is strong, but it's tough when you have good companies who are having trouble finding good employees. So if you know anybody, let them know. But they've done a tremendous job out there. And it blew me away when I saw the change that they've made in that place since they bought it. Congratulations to the police department on your K-9 tournament. It was successful, I understand. I appreciate all the effort on that. We've got a police and firemen support tournament on Friday. So that'll raise money and it's just great to see folks come out and support those folks who put their lives in jeopardy for us. And it's nice to, again, nice to see the support that they garnered for those tournaments, so great. Also on Saturday is the opportunity to raise money for the Jeff Hines Scholarship Fund. That's a former Post Falls football coach who passed away. So again, I'm sure there'll be a group of people out there helping support that. Again, to me, that's just indicative of the community we live in. People are always willing to step up and help out, so I appreciate that. That's it for me. Any council comments? Linda?
I'd like to congratulate Councilor Thorson on her new position at the Coeur d'Alene Summer Theater. She is now the director, so congratulations, Carrie. I would also like to remind people, I know that the mayor did say this, but the Post Falls Community Picnic this Thursday, I'm going to be bartending from 4:00 to 7:00. That's my regular shift. And just look forward to seeing everybody there. So I appreciate that.
Joe?
Another event, the United Way of North Idaho is hosting a charity motorcycle ride going around the Rose Lake Loop, starting at Longboard Coffee in Coeur d'Alene at 9:30. Registration opens at 8:30. You can preregister, which actually makes it better, www.unitedwayofnorthidaho.org. It's $20 for the ride and includes coffee and lunch and some swag. We end up at Curly's Hauser Junction for lunch hosted by Caruso's. Should be a good time. So anybody's interested in going for a nice ride Saturday morning, check it out.
But you'd have to have your, my wife would have to give me approval to ride a motorcycle, right?
This is true.
This is a motorcycle, not a bicycle?
Motorcycle.
Because I was going to bring up the fact that the Ironman triathlon is coming up on August 27th. This will be the last full Ironman in North Idaho. So everybody come out and volunteer or spectate for the last time, last hurrah on August 27th.
We do need an executive session. How long?
25 minutes.
Move to enter into...
Each time we say 15, it ends up being 25, so I just went for it.
Move to enter into executive position pursuant to Code 74-2061B to consider the evaluation dismissal or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. Further, no action will be taken and the session will last approximately 20 minutes.
25.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Warren, is that, this is what we had last time. Is it noticed properly this time? I thought it was the same one, so, okay. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wellhum?
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. We'll enter into executive session.
Aye.
Wellhun.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We'll enter into executive session.[1106.65]